All right, call the meeting in order. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Hines.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
All right, we're all here. Public comments, two-minute opportunity, going once. All right, Shar, if you think about it, I'll do the proclamation, we can come back. So move on to the proclamation tonight and then entertain a motion for approval. It's Toastmasters Day proclamation. Whereas Toastmasters International is a world leader in communication and leadership development with more than 332,000 members in 135 countries. And whereas the mission of Toastmasters is to provide a supportive and positive learning experience in which members are empowered to develop communication and leadership skills, resulting in greater self-confidence and personal growth. Whereas Toastmasters International values our integrity, respect, service, and excellence. And whereas the Oswego Toastmasters Club with members from Montgomery, Oswego, Aurora, and Plainfield in Yorkville sponsored a free youth leadership program this summer designed to develop the speaking and leadership skills of young people. And whereas by developing these skills, young people will be better prepared to meet the demands and challenges of today's world. And whereas youth participants learn how to prepare and present a speech, conduct meetings, listen effectively, and evaluate what they've heard, thus helping them to develop self-confidence and interpersonal communication skills that they will use for the rest of their lives. Whereas the youth leadership program will conclude on September 10th, 2015. Now therefore, I, Matt Rowley, Village President, Village of Montgomery hereby proclaim September 10th, 2015 as Toastmasters Day in the Village of Montgomery dated the 24th day of August 2015.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byn.
Yes.
Awesome.
Can I just say, that's my program.
Yes. Thank you for calling our attention to that, appreciate it. All right, I'll move on to the consent agenda and read these off and entertain a motion for approval. We have the minutes of the village board meeting, August 10th, accounts payable through August 20th, accounts receivable report for July of 2015, ordinance 1683, which is amending the village code for a Class G liquor license for South Moon BBQ at Gray's Mill, and then ordinance 1684, amending the village code for a Class L liquor license for South Moon BBQ at Gray's Mill, and item F, waiver of fee for a temporary Class J liquor license for the Chamber Annual Dinner.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Hines.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byn.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
I carry 6-0, thank you. Moving on, items for separate action. We have Resolution 2015-010 to accept a shared services study. And I'll ask Administrator Zofel for a summary of this.
Thank you very much. If you'll recall, we applied for and received a CMAP grant in conjunction with the Village of Oswego and the United City of Yorkville. It was a technical assistance grants where they gave us personnel to accomplish our project. We basically did a shared services study, looking at areas where the three communities could work together, you know, to save on costs or increase efficiency, whether it's jointly bidding out something, sharing equipment, sharing staff, you know, whatever the case may be. They've now completed their study. There was a copy of the study in your packets for you to look at. On page 10, they listed the goals of the study, what we were trying to accomplish, but they listed the main goals, where save and control costs, to increase the quality of service delivery, to expand the scope of service delivery, you know, one of the other communities may have equipment that we don't have, that we could use to, you know, add some additional services to the community that we can't now, to increase our efficiency, to formalize arrangements. We have some informal agreements now with the other communities, but this would just formalize them, you know, so we know who's, you know, whose liability, who's, what's the process for sharing, you know, any cost reimbursement, to improve public relations, you know, letting the public know that we are working with the other communities to try and be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, looking for ways that we can control the costs, become more efficient, and then to increase regional cooperation. So, starting on page 67, they have a couple pages where they discuss kind of their recommendations for what we should do moving forward. The first thing we'll do is, the communities, we will hold a joint meeting, either late summer, early fall, where we will try and set out which of the items we think we want to tackle this coming year, you know, are there certain items we think would be good to bid together this year, you know, is there a piece of equipment we want to jointly purchase, or is there a piece of equipment that one of the communities have that we want to work out a sharing agreement? So we'll get together and try and plan that out, so that going into this next budget process, we know which items we want to try and tackle, so that each of the communities can make sure to factor that into their budgetary plans. You know, once we've met, we would come back and report to the, you know, to the board on what we're looking at doing, on how we think it'll help our community. What CMAP is looking for is they'd like us to adopt the resolution, which basically accepts the report, you know, saying, all right, we will accept the report you've done, you know, doesn't mean we agree with all of it, or that, but just that we're accepting that they've done it. And then it says in there that we're willing to work with the other communities when it makes sense, when it's practical and feasible, you know, which may not be on every item. So, with that, I would answer any questions, and otherwise, we're just looking for approval, accepting the report tonight.
This doesn't hold us to any budget money or anything.
No.
It's like page 33 stated, hire a purchasing agent for the three. To me, that'd be a waste of money, because everybody's got their own budgets, and that, to me, didn't even seem feasible, but in my big government, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's where.
Wouldn't save money hiring somebody else.
They had several recommendations, you know, places where, yeah, if we jointly hired somebody, you know, we maybe will save money by sharing those costs, we may not, but that we're not committed to anything.
Right.
So we're just committed to work with the other communities when it, when and if it makes sense for us.
That's fine.
So, yeah, and so we would obviously, you know, get something like that approved through the budget process.
Okay.
I just had a comment, as I read through it, it seemed like a lot of staff time went into it from each community, so I do appreciate all the work, and I think it also reinforces one of the things this board has been stressing is having a regional approach. So I really like the idea that we're working on this and just continuing with us having a regional approach and bringing in the other communities as well.
Yeah, so we had some very good meetings where it was sort of all the management group together, but then also in our functional areas, so finance, met community development met from the communities, and so it's good to have a good working relationship with all of them, so.
We can terminate that with a seven days notice, right?
Yeah, we're not locked into anything.
Yes, seven days notice, written notice.
Yeah, I think that's where they were just looking at, how our contract language either differs or is the same among the communities, so.
So if you look at the resolution, it just says that we're accepting the study they did on our behalf for our community.
I'll move to accept the study.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byn.
Yes.
Thank you. I carry 6-0. Move on to item B, which is the 2015 pavement management study. This was tabled from the August 10th meeting. We talked about it once before that. I know that there were some questions, and they have been addressed.
Yes, I contacted Engineer Wallers and had my questions addressed.
Awesome.
And I appreciate having that tabled for more time.
Yeah, no problem. Unless staff has anything additional to add since last time, or there's no questions, I guess I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byn.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
I carry 6-0, thank you. All right, move on to a related item, professional services agreement with EEI for 2016 infrastructure road program design and construction engineering, the amount of $161,840. And with that, I'll turn it over to, I think for the first time, our Director of Public Works, Todd Happinstead.
That's correct. Thank you, Honorable Mr. President and Board of Trustees. Essentially, this is an action, following your last vote to approve the study, we now want to put that into action by approving Engineering Enterprises $161,840 quote for design engineering to take place in the current year, and then construction oversight and engineering for the following year, for the road maintenance. If there's any questions I can expand on, it was in your packet.
I know this is something that we've been talking about for a few years, is getting the design covered in this fiscal year, so that early in the construction season next year, we can hit the road, literally, early in the season. So I appreciate seeing this in August, still August, right?
It is.
I have one question. This was going to come later, this was going to come in newer unfinished business, but I think this is a good time. Originally, when we were talking about the sales tax referendum, and when we were at the Gray's Mill, we talked about construction signage, so residents could know this is their, their sales tax referendum at work. Do we have signage at that project currently? I haven't been down there, okay, thank you, Shar. But this, I know that we were going through a process where we're purchasing additional signage, is that part of this, or?
Yes, the intention is that we're going to have two signs made with the bridge project. They're already displayed, there's some issue with the exact type of sign, but setting that aside, we'll have sign panels made with each project until we have a sufficient number to deploy on each project. They'll be deployed by the contractor, successful contractor, and then put back to public works, and then be redeployed on the next job, so it's the intention to just reuse those signs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, staff, on the PSA?
The Honorable Trustee Lee, since I never heard that before, Todd, thank you. Make that motion.
There you go. Second. Second by Marisak, if there's no discussion, call the roll, please.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byn.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
I carry 6-0. All right, we'll move on. Items for discussion, BYOB. Let's talk about it.
I can introduce it, and then Laura will talk about it. If you recall, we had a resident come in a couple meetings ago that wanted to try and get a temporary liquor license for an event she wanted to hold at Riverview. She doesn't meet the qualifications for any of the licenses we currently have, so we told the village board we would bring back some options to you, what your things are, so the attorney's prepared a memo for you regarding BYOB, and just some other options to you, and so I'll let Laura walk you through that, and then we'll seek some guidance from you if you want to change anything.
Okay, yes, thank you. Enclosed in the packet is a memorandum that outlines a little bit of the state law issue pertaining to BYOB, and then also provides some options for the village. Generally, the Illinois Liquor Control Commission doesn't really have a whole lot to say about BYOB, so it is largely left to the municipalities, which does leave a lot of flexibility for the village and what they want to do going forward. Specifically, there's two different options, and they're not mutually exclusive, you could do both, you could do one, you could do neither, but that seemed that they might address some of the villagers' concerns right now with this type of issue. The first would be adopting a class of BYOB licenses, which would allow restaurants without liquor licenses to allow patrons to actually bring some sort of liquor into the premises. So I outlined some of the main questions that you would want to discuss, if that was a path that you would like to pursue, which would be which type of restaurants could obtain the liquor licenses, which type of liquors would be permitted, it could be limited to just wine, wine and beer, or it could also allow hard alcohol in, so that's one point of flexibility. Another question would be who pours the liquor? Does it have to be poured by a member of the staff of the restaurant, or it would be strictly just left to the patron, where the restaurant would only be allowed to provide glassware? You know, and also recorking, the state does allow you to recork as long as you seal the bottle then in a tamper-proof bag, so that would be something that you could consider as well. As far as the potential liability issues, that was a question that came up with regard to the dram shop statute. There's not really a whole lot of implication for the village in that regard, but the village can certainly, you know, put forth guidance for what the restaurant should do, but any dram shop liability would fall on the restaurant that was enabling the patrons to have the liquor, it wouldn't be a village issue necessarily. A second option would be for catering-type entities, and this has also come up, where they just want someone to come in and serve liquor. And currently, the catering license only allows, there is a 50% food requirement, so the caterer has to be providing both the food and liquor. We could draft something, either amending the catering license, or creating a whole new class of a pour-only type caterer that would allow somebody to have a party at a banquet hall, and then bring in a separate party to come in and pour and serve the liquor. And again, you could limit that to beer, to beer and wine only, or have a full bar. You know, there could be different corresponding fees involved with that as well. So those are two options that I thought might address, you know, some of the issues that have come up, there's certainly room for flexibility, and that's certainly not exclusively the only options available. At the end of the memorandum, I did outline what some other communities that have BYOB statutes, what they allow, what their licensing fees are, how much, you know, some restaurants might allow one bottle per person, I mean, a certain amount of ounces of beer per person, so it just kind of sets forth what the common parameters are there, just so you have an idea of what the local, what other communities are doing with their BYOB licenses. So with that, I can take any questions, otherwise, I would just encourage, these is the primary points of discussion, and then anything else, certainly, that comes up as well.
Laura, if an entity wanted to do a wine tasting, not a wine drinking, but a sampling, would that fall under BYOB, or is that a different?
That would be a different, I believe that there is something currently.
We have one for that currently, because like Sam's Club or different places can use.
Okay.
As that.
The one or two times I've been to a BYOB restaurant, we've always had to bring, well, we've brought our own alcohol, it had to be in an unopened bottle, they had to open it, they had to pour it, and I don't think there was anything left to take home, but if there was, I don't know if the same cork should be pushed down, or it should, I don't know what the tamper-proof bags or bottles or whatever look like, but I would definitely want an unopened bottle to be, or something to be brought unopened. I would want the, this, the entity, as far as the restaurant or the server, to be trained, they would open the bottle, they would pour the alcohol. I see that some of these say, you know, I think one of them said one bottle or something, but if you have a group of 15 people, you could go through five or six bottles of wine pretty easily, so I don't think that it should be limited to just one bottle.
Usually, it's implying one per person.
Well, then I wouldn't want them driving.
Chief, can you refresh my memory on this? I could have sworn, three or four years ago, when the last tenant opened up in Gray's Mill, I thought they did have BYOB for a while, and then it went away. Do you remember that?
That's correct. They're also in the statute under 625 ILCs, that's Traffic One. If you go to a restaurant and you finish half the bottle, they have to seal it in a bag, date and time, and then it's sealed with a nice seal, and then if you get stopped by the police, that's not now considered open alcohol in your vehicle, so, but you are correct. Originally, they were able to do that, and then we changed that.
And then we changed.
Correct.
Our local order. Okay.
I mean, for me, it seems like the insurance, to me, is a big one, that they have to carry the dram shop insurance. And at that point, if you're going to carry the insurance, and you want people in your facility to have alcohol, then get a liquor license. And if you want to have a restaurant, and you want people to come in and consume alcohol, or be able to, then get a liquor license. It's part of doing that business.
That was kind of the angle I was looking at, too, is I wonder what the restaurant community thinks of a BYOB ordinance, if some of our restaurants that, like South Moon, we just approved their liquor license, well, how would they feel, or how would that impact some of our existing restaurants, or what they, maybe they wouldn't even notice, but...
Yeah, you make your money on the liquor, not the food as much, and I noticed even St. Charles, in what you gave us, said that they have to carry dram shop insurance, they got to carry it in a way, why wouldn't the restaurant have liquor where they can make more money? It doesn't make a lot of sense to me, unless it's some club or something for a one-time deal, but then you're still regulating who's serving it, if they're over-serving or whatever, and if somebody does get hurt, dram shop, but whoever's serving it, which would be your neighbor or something, could be on the high end of getting hooked, which, to me, this whole BYO is something I wouldn't even consider, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me.
And a lot of these require the Basset insurance, you know, Basset training, so now, as a restaurant owner, you have to pay to train your staff, carry dram shop insurance. You can charge a corkage fee, which is usually like $10 or $15 a bottle, but you're missing, the big picture is, most restaurants make the majority of their profit off of the alcohol sales, because the profit margin's so much higher, and there's virtually no spoilage. Well, yeah, I'm not a fan of the BYOB.
This is the similar argument to, like, mobile vendors, when you have those, if you have a restaurant that doesn't want to put in the capital to serve alcohol, but yet still wants to do it for certain times, or wants you to bring your own so that you can have that, it seems to me like either he wants it, or he doesn't want it, so I'd like to see him.
Yeah, you're still going to have to have the dram shop insurance, and then you have to worry about who is the server that night. I think that resident kind of made it sound like she might be the server for her neighbors or something, but I think when you really get down to the insurance angle of it, that wouldn't work. I mean, you'd have to have go-through training and all, by that time, and most of these would probably be quick parties that somebody comes up with, and to go through training and everything, I don't see anybody could do that.
If you're going to require insurance, which I think is a good idea, the place to have dram shop insurance, then the BYOB doesn't really make a lot of sense, because at that point, they may as well apply for a liquor license if they want one.
Right.
And if they don't, then that's a business decision on their part.
I mean, I see if you, if it was a small, little, like, Italian bistro, starting off new business or something, getting a BYOB to kind of get their feet underneath them, and then come and get a full-fledged liquor license after they get established, that would be a different story, but this is kind of directed directly to a banquet facility.
Right.
That if you're going to have a banquet facility, and you want to be able to market it that way, then you should have a liquor license.
Plus, speaking to our lawyer, would it not be if you had a bistro like he's saying, and you didn't have any money, and something does happen, and they're going to sue deep pockets, that'd be us for giving them the liquor license, correct? The BYO license?
Well, the BYO license, that, the dram shop liability would fall on the entity, I mean, that's a business decision if they're choosing to serve alcohol or not, you know, the village issuing the license, I don't believe that you, I don't think that risk falls on them.
Okay.
So not hearing tons of support to make any changes at this point. If I've misheard or misread your face, let me know. I appreciate the discussion on this, and we'll move on. All right, our second item for discussion this evening is bulk water use, and with that, I'll ask our Public Works Director for a presentation on this one.
I figured I'd spare you the PowerPoint. I know how much Trustee Youngerman likes those. So, to give you a little sense of the current longstanding practice, the village has allowed bulk water to be picked up from hydrant identified in front of the Public Works Department by contractors, doing anything from power washing to road grinding, sewer cleaning, directional drilling, any number of tasks that require water. With that, they're required to bring a tanker truck, they're also supposed to have an account set up with the village, and then they're supposed to fill out on their honor a record and drop that in the mailbox. It's my assessment in the short five weeks that we're not capturing probably 30% of the bulk water leaving. Weekends tend to be pretty busy, from what I hear, through some of the employees that come in for various tasks on the weekend, they say there's trucks lined up collecting water, and Monday morning, we'll have two tickets. So it suggests that we're not getting the best bang for our buck on that. Additionally, we're not very well protected in that we don't have an RPZ at the station to protect against cross-contamination, although that's a relatively minor threat, if you understand how fire hydrants work, it is a threat, and it's not recommended. In addition to that, we have 10 large hydrant meters and another six smaller hydrant meters that the finance department will lease out. Essentially, a contractor can put a deposit down and take those anywhere in town, and use the hydrant to, you know, make their job a little more efficient. We don't have any very good protocols set up as far as recalling those meters for accuracy testing periodically. Those meters do not go out with RPZs either, it would be the contractor's responsibility to apply one, but our current practice doesn't really tell us where those meters are going in town, so that's a little hard for us to police. So I think it's safe to say that something should be done, some action should be taken to make this a safer and more accurately capturing water usage program. So a couple recommendations, and let me just start by saying, I don't think any solution is fail-safe. This is a problem that every community faces worldwide. So one solution would be to recall all those meters and accuracy test them. I'm guessing that, given their age and type of use, we'd find that many of them are not very accurately recording water usage if applied correctly, and that since they don't have RPZs at this time, there's going to be some investment to resolve that issue. The other issue would be to apply one of those meters and RPZs at the public workstation. We're protecting ourselves a little bit better, we may be able to accurately determine what's going through the meter, but again, we're on the honor system, so that's just going to add to our frustration when we confirm that we've given away 20,000 gallons, and we've only accounted for 2,000, let's say. So what my recommendation essentially would be, is to kind of go a little further up the chain and purchase a prefabricated bulk water filling station. This expense is currently unbudgeted, and I'm not currently asking for approval on this, it's just to kind of get the discussion going and the wheels turning. That station runs just south of $40,000, and there would be about a $2,000 investment on the village's behalf to add the piping underground and put in a concrete pad. But what that station would allow is that our finance department could activate an account real-time, somebody could make their account set up here at the counter, and then before they could even get over to public works, they'd be activated in the system. They'd have to put in a three-digit user code, followed by a four-digit PIN, so that will allow for some job tracking. It also allows for a company that's contesting maybe their usage, we can say, well, it was X employee who came 10 times, and if the company has something to pursue there, then that's on them. That station would be an annual station, as opposed to my earlier suggestion of putting a meter in an RPZ, which clearly would just be seasonal. Once temperatures start to dip, that would freeze up, so we'd have to remove it. It would only cover our needs seasonally. So a prefabricated station installed gives finance also the ability to shut down a user if they're deficient, or we could structure those accounts in a way that they're working off of a credit system, and when they reach zero, the well is dry, essentially. We can establish different pay structures if we like. Currently, the contractors that are using water through the bulk system are paying three times the out-of-town rate, because it is a convenience for their business. But essentially, if we found that we wanted to cut somebody a break after, say, their first 20,000 gallons annually, that's something that we could entertain doing. It also would, I believe, make it a little more enticing for people to follow the rules, because there'd kind of be a threshold of discount established. The question that I'm sure I'm going to get is what happens at the other 1,455 hydrants throughout town? And I guess the answer to that is, going back to the fact that none of this is fail-safe, somebody can always steal water from a fail-safe, somebody can always steal water from a hydrant. Anybody with a pipe wrench or a hydrant wrench can take water from a fire hydrant. That's kind of the public safety aspect of having the water so accessible. The only way we're really gonna curtail that without a major investment to put locks on all of our hydrants, would be just to get our program in order, first of all, then get the education out there, not only to our contractors, but our village employees first, and then maybe eventually, our citizens as well. By taking a hard stance on enforcement of people, you know, caught stealing water, I think word will get out amongst the contractor environment, if you will, and I think we can also encourage not only police, public works, building inspectors who are on the roads, we can encourage them to look for certain things that are gonna help identify water theft, and then eventually, we might even be able to educate the, the citizenry a little bit as well. If they see something, say something, to kind of steal a, a line from anti-terrorism, I guess, but essentially, you know, it's a valuable tip. We are able to detect some unauthorized water usage through our SCADA system. We can see where our pumpage and our, our pressures have spiked, and a lot of times, we're finding things at like, say, five-thirty in the morning in that timeframe, so probably right as a contractor's getting ready to roll out. Although we can kind of pinpoint what area of town that occurred, it's impossible for us to say which hydrant. But I've had pretty good success with kind of roping this in, in a previous municipal position I held, by looking at things like foot traffic in the snow around a hydrant, melted snow around a hydrant, things that tip you off if you know what you're looking for. So educating us on what to look for, I think we could quickly kind of rein that in and get the word out that we're taking it seriously, and I think then abuse will start to decline.
If we, you know, move at the bulk water station, we would require everybody to fill up there, so I mean, right now, if you see somebody fill up on a hydrant, you don't always know, are they allowed to be there, do they have a meter? If we go to the bulk water station, you see somebody on a hydrant somewhere else in the village, you know they're not supposed to be there. It's not, it's not a question then, so.
Jeffrey, go ahead. I think he was here that, when Kate Pike was working on thirty-one here, we turned them in. They were using the water without a meter or anything, and also on Wabansy Avenue.
Contractors currently working on village-funded projects are essentially given the water to avoid any markup and having it just show up on our invoice, but we still like to monitor how much water is used for our LMO two. And one other thing I might note is that there are some intergovernmental relationships where it may still be very valuable for us to maintain a fire hydrant and an RPZ use in the field. For example, Fox Metro has a sewer cleaning contractor, and I know as we go, no, I'm sorry, Aurora Township, maybe it is as we go, I'm sorry, in Boulder Hill that's doing street sweeping occasionally, they draw water from us. I think it's safe to assume if we gave them the appropriate tools as part of that agreement, that they would honor our request, and we may also be able to reduce some of our water quality complaints. Essentially, by doing so, you're, you're eliminating all the various points where somebody could be drawing water, and as you exercise a hydrant, you stir things up in the main, so that's what leads to some of those water quality complaints. If we can kind of steer those contractors to a certain location of our choice, that would certainly reduce some of our operational headaches. And then, lastly, there are a few businesses in town that I'm aware of that are currently using a hydrant meter as a longstanding practice in a way to essentially meet the needs of their business. Those, I would suggest, would go through the formal planning process, have an engineering drawing submitted for review, and you, you would install a dedicated metered line for that, just like if you were, you know, building a Costco or something, you would need a metered line for that building. You should have to do the same for your business, even if it's outdoor.
Pete, we're always short of water, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, we always can't figure where the water goes, and, and I think part of this, like Todd said, that these businesses will get the message, and right now, the message is, you go in, you get a meter, they give you the wrench. That's all these guys care about, is the wrench. And then the girl calls and says, what is your meter reading? And they just don't call back. And to me, when a guy does that for months, and he's still got that, that hydrant wrench, he could be giving that to all his buddies, and that's how we lose water. I mean, it's, it's like you say, it's the honor system, and I'm sorry to say, there's some businesses in town that are not really honorable, and, and especially when they will not call their meter readings in. I don't mind Fox Valley Sewer, Fox Valley Metro, these people we do business with, fine, but these other outlandish guys that, that come in, and all they want's that wrench. If you can get that wrench, like you say, at five-thirty in the morning, they can take in anything they want, and it doesn't cost them a penny.
And they, they don't even need the hydrant wrench. I mean, you could do it with tools in your garage. Unfortunately, that's, that's where we're at.
But the reality is, it's not happening everywhere, all the time, on all of our hydrants. We would see people cracking open the hydrants, and I've actually never seen that outside of, you know, the one at Montgomery Fest, and at different construction sites and that, but, and the amount of the actual volume of water that somebody could take without paying isn't going to be huge.
That also is correct. However, there are some other things that I may not have touched on. If a contractor's using a hydrant, and they're not, you know, fully competent in the use of a hydrant, they not only cause us some operational concerns at popping a main and then walking away, leaving us with the mess to clean up, but they can improperly shove a hydrant down, which not only negatively impacts fire safety when that hydrant's called upon, but that hydrant can essentially leak for years, unknown, and that's where the volume would be seen.
Right.
So that's, that's another thing to consider.
What currently happens with people when they're caught stealing water?
I think I'd defer to the chief on that one.
Yes, we, we have had a couple over the last several years. It is a misdemeanor theft, but it's very hard to prove. The, the cost of per thousand is really minimal.
That's a problem that we run into with the, the industry that I'm in, and I know that we've go through, we have hydrant meters, we pay fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred dollar deposits for these meters, and then we're charged, in a lot of cases, a monthly fee for this meter as well, in addition to our water, so it's in our best interests to turn these meters back in. Because if we set it on the shelf, and we have it for another year or two, it, Village doesn't care, they're gonna get their, they've, they've got the deposit check, plus they're getting their, their thing. I know that one of my guys was threatened with arrest when he didn't have the meter in one of the different cities, so I don't know, like you said, it's hard to prove if, are we, we're just handing out the wrench? We're not handing out?
No, the meter goes with it, except I, I question, like Matt said, he never seen, but I've seen right here by the old post office, a guy filling up, probably ten thousand gallons, and I go, who is this guy? Well, nobody could answer, because on our form doesn't say, he had, I think, mobile car wash or something on the side of his, on his thing, and he did have a meter, but I couldn't see if he had a meter or not, because he was just finishing up, and I, nobody knew what was on the side of a truck. They have a name, that's it. So like you say, your employees, if they're in a Mark Twin, well, because you'd know who it is, but if it wasn't, they wouldn't know who the guy was, and that's the thing, you gotta know who the person is, what color van he drives, what's the lettering on the van, and then you can find that, hey, this guy's stealing water, isn't he? One of the two, and, but you take ten thousand gallons here, ten thousand here, and, and that's what adds up the money. I mean, there's no, and our, some of our meters have been out for a long time, and I, the girls admit, they don't even know what the guy looks like. I mean, he, he just, he sends, he calls a reading in once in a while and sends a check in. Other than that, we don't know who they are. I mean, to me, I don't know, I guess some of the people have to have this, but.
What size are the meters?
You make a, you make a good point, that no truck is gonna carry the volume that's what we're really perceiving as a threat. However, the hydrants not being shut down properly, that are leaking for sometimes years on end, or the risk of main break, I think is, is certainly adds to our costs.
Long-term damage, I mean, and we should get, we should bill for all the water we treat, it costs us a lot of money to treat, and it's good, high-quality, award-winning water.
And essentially, to meet the, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
The, to meet the requirements of the American Public Works Association and the American Water Works Association, we would have to take some action to address our current policy. In looking at those numbers, it's essentially about the same dollar amount if we're gonna choose to put that many fire hydrant meters back out into the system that we currently have on lend, and then there's some manual maintenance costs and, and testing costs associated with that. So it's, it's a bit of a wash, whether you're trying to weigh the option of going with more hydrant meters or a station, but I think we have the, the responsibility to do something at some point here in the near future.
Absolutely, and I appreciate you, you really shutting this down, billing what we need to bill, and doing a good, solid practice for it, too, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
So would we be looking at building this station, and we would still keep a few meters for some, because there's some businesses that need and require a meter for a hydrant?
Yes.
But the bulk of it, we want at the station?
Correct.
Filling up under our eye?
Instead of, say, the sixteen current meters that we have in stock, I would say maybe three would be acceptable. You, you still have to allow some of those meters, not only for the intergovernmental relationships, but, you know, if a building is being demolished, that's a good time to lend out a meter, you want some fire suppression there. So there are certain reasonable.
When we contract, you know, the village supplies water for these contractors, are they given a meter? Would that be a good practice, so we can track usage for the given project, so that they're not filling up for their other projects?
I, I would hope that they are. I can't speak accurately necessarily, because my five-week tenure here, but that's what we've been doing now. Currently, there's a bridge contractor working in town that's gonna be using water on a consistent basis, starting tomorrow. I waived their need for one of our village meters, only because their operation currently has an RPZ and a meter in it. All I need is the reading, essentially. They're actually set up a lot better than what we would have offered, so that's why I waived that, but I want the beginning reading and the ending reading for accountability.
What color are, are meters painted, a certain color, or?
I think many of ours are blue, but I don't know that that's necessarily across the board.
Can, for, for ease of, of seeing if they've got the proper meter, can we just paint our meters an obnoxious color?
Yes, we certainly could.
Packer green?
I think, I'm sorry?
Packer green and yellow?
Yeah, that's it.
That's an option, or hot pink, or whatever you choose. That helps with identifying whether one is present or not, and if it's ours, versus, actually, this just happened two weeks ago, one of my meter technicians saw a contractor using water with a meter, but he stopped to chat anyhow, and it's an Aurora meter. So although he's accurately gaining a reading, Aurora's billing on it and not us, and it's, it's our finished product. That doesn't necessarily prevent them from putting it on backwards, which causes it to malfunction, sometimes can even deduct a read, or from even applying it at all. I think the reason that, if I had to guess, the reason that I believe the public workstation is so currently abused, is because contractors can pull up there, and they're filling in the right place, and they can say that they were gonna fill the tag out at the very end of their operation, if somebody should happen upon them, and, you know, they, they pretty much have every opportunity to do things right, and since nobody showed up during the course of their filling, they figure, okay, it's, it's safe, you know, maybe even look around and see that there's a less-than-efficient security system in place, and they think it's safe to just drive off, and they, they can always use that excuse, ooh, I just forgot to fill out the sheet, my bad. I mean, if the police do catch them, they're just gonna wanna fill out the sheet at that point. So it's just, it's, it's people unfortunately taking advantage of the trust that we've put in them and, and the honor system.
How much time might lapse before we might be able to afford a system like you're suggesting?
Well, I, I do believe in number crunching, that the system would probably pay for itself in about a period of two years, if not less. Currently, it's, it's not budgeted for, and it is a sufficient price. I was looking for some areas to identify potential funding, but I'd have to get with Justin, the finance director, and see if, see if those accounts have been tapped yet. The other opportunity would certainly force to plan for it, going into the budget planning process. Again, this was not intended to be a recommendation to move forward, just to kind of get the wheels rolling, and, and understand that we're aware of the problem, and that there's some, some things to look into.
Is there a chance that grant funds might be available for something of this nature?
I, I would have to guess doubtful, because I don't think it impacts enough residents for that to be a viable option, but I, I can't say accurately.
One additional comment, until we can afford to install something like this, perhaps consider installing a video camera, so we've got some scrutiny of the honesty of people that go through that lane, and.
It's something we can certainly look into, but again, a, a cost.
I think it would pay for itself, like you said, in a couple of years. What I'd like to see is some of these meters that we got out now brought back in. These people that will not call meters, their, their readings in, all they're doing is just stalling. I mean, they're, they're probably not even using the meters, and that way, you can see, if they use so much every month, then all of a sudden, for three months, they don't use anything, and yet you know they're out there, you know they're using water, but not using the meter.
At, at a minimum, I would like to know where those meters are being used, so that we can periodically check to make sure the hydrant isn't leaking. We could also perform a surprise visit, I suppose, and see that the water is being flown through the meter, and that it's attached properly.
Right.
So.
That would be nice.
I mean, if we move forward with the bulk water station, then we would eliminate a number of those meters, you know, there'd still be some out there, so, you know, if there's no objections, we will get together with Justin and look and see. We can certainly budget for it next year, we can look and see if there's a possibility that there are funds to be used this year, and, and go from there, so.
One last item that I, I might mention is similar to what Trustee Youngerman mentioned, that your business uses these and pays a healthy security deposit. Some of these smaller contractors that don't wanna front that money for a meter may start to come our way to buy from the station, because it is relatively convenient and, and legal to do so. I don't know that that's a business we're trying to attract in town, but certainly, we may start getting customers from other towns that, you know, are willing to pay that water rate, just for the convenience factor, so.
And we must have meters, I think, for probably ten different municipalities, and when we get a meter, we're always told, pretty specifically, what hydrant we can use. It might be a combination of three, if it's a large site, but I, I've never been able to just drive around town and pull out of a, any hydrant that I want. I mean, it's always one, three tops, so I don't know.
You're, you're accountable, sir. That's the difference, I think, because you could use it anywhere, but you're honest and accountable.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Somehow, we always save this stuff for last. Moving on to the quarterly financial report, followed by the financial policies, capitalist asset policy.
Thank you, Village President Riley, and I'll try to go quick on this, so. July 31st, that's the end of the first quarter of fiscal year 16. We're through three months, or twenty-five percent of fiscal year 16 already, and we are tracking general capital improvement and water funds. Within general fund, the budgeted revenues are nine-point-four million. We are approximately at thirty-five percent through the end of July. Now, part of that is because June, we receive a large influx of property taxes, so that's why it's higher than the twenty-five percent. I have listed out the state sales tax, of course, the property tax, and the state income tax are the three largest revenue components in the general fund, have listed those there. It is hard to project those so early in the year, but we have listed those out there. I did list three smaller revenue items that I wanted to continue to track. One is building permits, we're actually at thirty-two percent through three months of the year. Professional service reimbursement, we're at eighteen percent, that's where a developer would come in and wants to develop a particular parcel, so even though this night might be eighteen percent, that means our expenditures on the other side are, are at eighteen percent as well, so fines and forfeitures. So, um, fines and forfeitures, uh, we've looked at this in the past. We're currently at twenty-four point eight percent through, um, three months of the year, which that is just about right on where we should be. Um, expenditures for fifteen, we're at nine point two. And through July, we're at two point two million or twenty-four percent. Um, there's three items I listed down at the bottom, but they are all due to timing. Uh, timing issues at this, at this point in the year. Capital improvement fund, I have listed out the three, uh, largest revenues there. Electric, natural gas, and telecommunications tax. Again, uh, through this many months of the year, we can't necessarily project through the end of the year, but I have listed those out there. Uh, water fund, um, we are, budget is four point seven million dollars for revenue and we are at approximately thirty-three percent, um, through three months of the year. Mind you, there is higher usage in the summer, so that's why you're gonna see a little bit higher, uh, dollars now. And then in the winter, the usage will drop off slightly, so. I have listed some items down for expenditures, uh, out of water fund, but again, those are due to timing, uh, during the year. If there's any questions, I can certainly answer those at this time.
Thank you, Justin, and I appreciate, I actually do appreciate getting this report and looking it over. Any questions, Justin, on this, this evening? Harry Nun, you wanna move on to the next topic? Uh, the financial policies and, uh, capital asset policy?
Sure. There's two policies in front of the board tonight for, uh, consideration. The first is financial policies. These are in regards to budget, reserves, revenue, expenditures, debt. There's a lot in there. I would ask, uh, the board to look at each one of them individually. Um, I'll go through them very briefly. Um, long story short is, we're following, uh, these policies informally. Most of them are informal. We do have an investment policy that is formalized. None of the rest of these are informal. Formalizing these gives us a better chance to raise our bond rating. Right now, we're at a good, uh, financial policy rating by the bond, by the bond rating agencies. We can actually improve that to very good or excellent. That gives us just a couple more notches in our belt to, to go to the, from an double A to a double A plus, eventually to a triple A, uh, rating. So that's, that's why the first one is in front of the board. The second one is a capital asset policy. Um, the, it was last updated in May of two thousand and four. Uh, we have had, uh, a management letter come in from our auditors, um, that they would recommend that we, um, recommend that we update this. The reason being, when this was adopted in May two thousand and four, uh, that was when the reporting completely changed, the government reporting completely changed, uh, with GASB thirty-four. There have been several amendments to GASB thirty-four since then, and so that's why they're recommending we update it. If there's any questions about specific policies, I can go over those. Um, otherwise, we would bring these back to the board in the future for approval.
All right, if you have any questions, pass them along to Justin and we'll see this at a future meeting. Thank you. All right, new or unfinished business?
I have a couple items, if I may. Um, excuse me. I work in the landscape construction industry and whatever, we work in multiple municipalities. And we have to get a landscape license through the village in many of those municipalities. And as I understand, the village of Montgomery doesn't require any sort of landscape license from any sort of contractor. I know that we had to do it, we were doing a project in Lake Forest. Um, we had to submit a certificate of insurance, we had to fill out an application. I think the landscape license was about a hundred dollars. Just to kind of know, okay, who, you know, I, I also had to take a picture of our letterhead. That way, or, or, uh, our side of our vehicle, that way, um, they could easily identify what our vehicles were. We had to give them a list of every vehicle that we had with the VIN number. Um, and we don't do any sort of that stuff here. And it, it may be helpful, I mean, we're not gonna get a lot of money out of it, but it may be helpful as far as to know who is on our streets, who is doing business in our village. And just, I just wanted comments from the board.
We do currently have a contractor's license that we require, but I don't know if we require it of lands, of landscape. You know, if somebody's coming to do roofing work or other works, we do require a contract license annually, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars. But I, I wish Rich was here, cause I'm not sure if it applies to landscape or not.
Okay.
We will look.
And then my second item, uh, recently, uh, we received a letter. I know the village board received a letter from, uh, senior citizen in Boulder Hill discussing water rates uh, and the possibility of some sort of discount, um, for seniors that are making less than a certain dollar figure. Uh, I'd like to see that discussed at a future meeting. Uh, not only for Boulder Hill, but also for the village, uh, of Montgomery, senior residents as well, if we could.
And that's something that I've talked to Jeff and our attorneys about previously. I've gotten some, ever since we started with the fifteen dollar a month, um, fee for the Boulder Hill users, we've had, I don't know, a handful of those complaints come in. So maybe that's something that we can, I can chat with you about the status of that.
That's it.
I've got two things real quick. One, I'm wearing my green and gold because of Jordi Nelson, in memory of him for this year. And any of you guys wanna bet five dollars on September thirteenth game, I'd be glad to bet you. Uh, the other thing more serious is I had my neighbor who has land all the way back to the river watching the fireworks and legally, I don't want our lawyer to jump in too quick, cause I, I think there's a lot of discussion on it now, but he's watching the fireworks and he sees something blue and red go flying by in the sky and he thought it was even a fireworks. And then later on, it came back and then it sat there and looked at him. And here it was, a drone. And it was like, he, he said, how can a guy stop in my own private yard and sit there and look at me? And then he took off for the bypass. I think that's something, and I'm sure a lawyer will say, the airlines are looking at it now even, and so is the state and everybody, but somehow it sure is a privacy issue. Uh, and I don't think we wanna start on it now because it's gonna go down the road. That somebody sooner or later is gonna have to say, you gotta regulate the people to buy these. Although, in the news the night, right before I came, it showed a guy in St. Charles having three of them stolen right out of his store. And a guy walks right out the door with them and it was on Channel Seven News. And I'm going, well, there wouldn't be any registration on those three, but it, it's just kind of like, like he said, here I'm sitting there watching the fireworks, we're the only two people in that whole area and this thing goes flying by us to get a better picture of the fireworks. And then he comes back and he stops right in my yard and looks at us. And he, and he said, that's really a privacy. And then this guy took off, but he has no idea. It could be somebody in Boulder Hill or Swigle, as far as he knows, the way some of these drones are. But it's just an issue, I think, that, uh, as my buddy up in Antioch said, I'd take a gun out and shoot it, but I don't think that's a good idea. But it gets to that point where, you know, it's a privacy on your own private property and, and just so we know that there is active drones in Montgomery running around. I don't know if, that's the first time I ever heard of one, I don't know about you, Dan.
I don't wanna speak for the chief, but I'm pretty sure that we do, uh, not recommend shooting them.
No, that's for sure.
Um, I had the.
Not the first time in Montgomery, right, Mayor?
Yeah, on Fourth of July, same thing. My backyard, I'm hanging out with my neighbors. Drones flying, zipping around, zipping around, just hovered over my house for a half hour and then left and came back. And I'll, I'll be honest with you, it's, it's kind of, it's a, in my opinion, it violated me a little bit. And like, what are they looking at? What are they watching? We're just hanging out. So I talked with, uh, the chief and Jeff and Steve Anderson about it. And I knew that, I know that municipalities, this is something that we'll probably have to deal with if we can. I don't know if legally we can, but in the next, well, apparently it's starting now, or in the next five years, this is gonna be something that.
They're getting more popular, I guess. I didn't know you had one, but that's, it's just kinda like, it, it's fine if they're just flying over, but when they stop and look at you, then it's, and on your property, it's definitely a privacy thing. But I didn't know you had one too, so maybe there's one on the east and one on the west side, see?
Yeah, this guy was around flying.
And I'm sorry, if I may.
Go ahead.
You're absolutely right. This is something right now that the FAA is currently reviewing. Um, and they're expected to set forth guidance, but, uh, relatively shortly. There have been a few communities that have, um, put forth ordinances, um, over festivals, you know, like a Montgomery Fest type situation. And it still is unclear whether, you know, how much latitude a municipality has, if any, until these FAA regulations come out. Um, but it is something that we have been actively monitoring and we'll be sure to let you know as soon as there's a little bit more handed down from the state and from the federal level.
Thank you.
Would it be appropriate to raise that issue with Metro West and see if other communities have shared concern?
Yeah, certainly, probably all have their own several creepy stories just like that and.
The, the governor just created a task force, so we should hear something very soon.
Thank you.
Nobody wants to fly around my house.
Any other new or unfinished?
Uh, I would just like to share that, um, South Moon Barbecue actually has Grays Mill up on their website now. The, a photo of the building up on their website. And I took my folks out there, hung Hinkley on Sunday and it is fantastic. It was really good and, and very nice, friendly people. They're really looking forward to coming to town.
Awesome. All right, so, uh, future meetings, you'll see the planning commission beyond here has been canceled. It doesn't say that, but it has been canceled for September third. And then before our September fourteenth meeting is the, um, Chambers Annual Dinner, which is September tenth, it's a Thursday evening. So if, if, uh, anyone here can make that, that would be appreciated. You see the rest of the meetings there and then we have executive session. I'll entertain a motion to go in to discuss two items. Uh, discuss collective negotiating matters pursuant to five LCS one twenty over two C two. And then to discuss employment of an employee, five LCS one twenty over two, C one.
Still moved.
Second.
Roll please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Ben?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Awesome, thank you. All right, with that, we'll call the meeting back to order and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
Trustee Heinz, Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Ben?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Oh, his microphone's up. And we're, we'll adjourn, thank you.